Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 21 legislative meeting of 2020. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Rivera. Washington.
Here.
Ritter Dixon.
Here.
Here.
Nixon.
Thank you. And now I'd like action on the minutes of June 3. Are there any corrections or amendments to the minutes as presented? Please say aye.
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 Thank you. And now, we need to accept the minutes of July 6. Are there any amendments or corrections to those minutes as distributed? Hearing none. All those in favor accepting the minutes of August 18? Please say aye. No, I'm sorry. On...
July 6.
I apologize. July 6.
Aye.
Say aye.
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 Very good. Thank you.
And just for clarification, that is...
Can we pause for a second? We're struggling here. Can everybody hear okay, or is he struggling a little bit? It's getting a little low.
It feels like everyone is shouting. There's a delay that is very confusing.
And when you're not speaking, mute your mic.
Okay, just be sure, one person speaks at a time, and when you're not speaking, remember to mute your mic.
And council, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Just for clarification, those minutes are for June 3 and for July 6.
Yes, thank you. All right. For the public at large, if you wish to make comment on any of the agenda items prior to us considering them, please feel free to give a call. The public is welcome to call at 717-849-1425. The next legislative session of York City Council will be August 18 at 6 o'clock. This evening, we have a presentation by the Economic Alliance on the Cudores Creek Beautification Improvement Project.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Stamen. I'm the project manager on behalf of Buchart Horn, and we are consulting architects and engineers to the York County Economic Alliance. So I believe my presentation should be viewable to viewers online right now. It's in front of me. So this first slide just explains, in this Cudores Greenway project, the York County Economic Alliance is acting as the grantee. So in essence, the funding for the project is coming through their organization, and then in turn, they are employing both Buchart Horn and C.S. Davidson for the engineering effort to date. So we'll talk a little bit more about the project, but it's important to note that the Cudores Creek and this idea of improving it actually dates back to 1907. This is a plan that we see from Frederick Law Olmsted, a famous landscape architect who actually designed Central Park in New York. And he had envisioned that the Cudores Creek could be improved if the public could own the land alongside its banks and provide some kind of promenade that could link the whole city along the creek. Now, of course, at 1907, we're at the peak of industry, and the creek was not much more than an industrial sewer. And then we see in 1933, the largest flood on record, the most severe, and York was flooded to this extent that you see in the photo. This is actually taken from Market Street at Beaver Street. So you can see that the flooding is already on the first floor of those buildings that are relatively far away from the creek, a few blocks. This flood is what actually initiated the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to take jurisdiction of the creek. So after this flood, York and other cities were devastated to the point that a federal entity had to actually come in and help the local city recover, help the flooding effort. So despite the Corps' implementation of what is now the levee system that is in the city of York and also Indian Rock Dam that protects the city of York from flooding, we still had another severe flood in 1972 with Hurricane Agnes. So many of you may remember 1972. This is at Newbury and Princess Streets, and you can see again that homes are flooded. So the history of the creek is really, it's been marked by this kind of scar in our history. So both an opportunity and a devastation, and that's something that we had to deal with in the project. Several more recent studies envisioned this creek being revitalized and being a piece of our city that we could be proud of, that would actually join neighborhoods, that would provide recreation and repose, and also be something that you could walk along to get places to, a mode of transportation other than cars. So in 2003, we have a study from the York County, at the time, the county was funded by the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. And then again, in 2006, a similar study envisioning a rebirth of the creek. And as recent as 2017, again, we see the Green Action Plan be released under Mayor Bracy's time as mayor. This envisioned specifically a park along the Northwest Triangle. But here's our creek today, so there it sits in that state. This is just south of the West College Avenue Bridge. And we can also see that when it floods, we still have this condition where it's unsightly, it's collecting debris at that bascule gate. And statistically, our firm has looked at rain gauge data since 1940. The 1972 Agnes flood was around a once-in-every-50-year event. So we are actually overdue for a flood of that magnitude. So this, what you see here in this photo is actually pretty minor. This was 2018. So our project envisions the creek differently, that we could actually vegetate the banks with, return it to native plantings that help absorb some of that stormwater, and basically create a one-and-a-half-mile linear park through the center of York City. And now this linear park would connect several neighborhoods that are outliers of the downtown area. What you're seeing here is a channelized version of the creek where the water is faster-moving, giving more dissolved oxygen, which helps with habitat for wildlife and water clarity. You're also seeing accessible banks where the public could actually walk right down to the edge of the water, fish, boat, and have opportunities to enjoy the water instead of being separated from it as we are now. This is a timeline showing the work of the project so far. After the Green Action Plan in 2017, there was a new effort in about 2018 where Buchart Horn was engaged to do a hydraulic study. The reason that we needed to do that was the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has a permitting process that needs to designate if our changes are compliant with a flood capacity that needs to be met with this channel. So that hydraulic study took place to understand what we could do to modify the channel. Then in 2018, many of you may remember that we had the collapse of the flood wall beneath the West Philadelphia Street Bridge. That shifted course of our project because now Phase 1 actually became that area to address that failing flood wall. In 2019, we continued our study with several public sessions where we met for input and engagement with the community, and that's something that we've continued to do. So you'll see several meetings there listed. Some of those were at our office and at other local places in the community, Penn Market, Shiloh Baptist. We came out to the Waco Creek Fire when the Weary Art Groups performed. And then later, we did several Facebook Live question-and-answer sessions. So currently, we are designing Phase 1. The Phase 1 will be from about the midpoint between West King Street and West Market Street, northward about two blocks until just before the first railroad crossing that you see north of Philadelphia Street. And in the future, we will submit that for permitting to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. These are some of the photos from the public meetings that took place. Some of these we initiated, and some, we actually had students come out of the woodwork that were interested in the project. So we both created meetings and then hosted students so that they could learn about the environment and kind of the broad diversity of career options that were showcased by this project: engineering, geology, understanding climate data. And there was even some applications for the STEAM Academy students, Lincoln Charter students. So what we're hoping is really that this project becomes something that is owned by the community, something that these students can take ownership of in the future, that this would become their park, their asset to take care of for the city. So I'd like to explain a bit about what we're asking of council today. This is a map of Phase 1 of the project. So moving from the left side and then downward to the right side, I'll just run through what we're asking. There are several creekside parcels that the city of York owns, and they are in the vicinity of this Phase 1 of the project. So they are all on the east bank of the creek. Some are north of West Philadelphia Street between Purging and the creek. And then the others are south of West Market Street between the bus station and the creek. So those parcels are actually needed by the project because the channel itself is not wide enough in these areas to convey that flood capacity that is needed from the Corps of Engineers. So the purpose of actually acquiring the parcels for the project is really just to satisfy the Corps of Engineers' requirement for ownership during construction. That's one of the requirements that they have in order to permit the project from happening. So what we're asking is temporary ownership of those parcels. Once we complete the project, then those parcels would be subdivided, and the remaining portion up on the street level that the city of York owns now would be returned to the city with a new paving of the rail trail, new lighting, new trees. So in essence, the properties get improved and then returned to the city for a dollar. That is the proposal. The other motion that will be brought up tonight is an approval of a subdivision plan to allow the project to take place in the area of West Market Street to West Philadelphia Street Lafayette Plaza. This I welcome everyone to take a look at. It's actually embedded, the link is embedded in the agenda and then in the resolution. This is a cover of a lookbook that explains the project, very conceptual plans at this point, and we are just looking to do Phase 1 at this time and moving through the sales acquisition and the parcel management for Phase 1. So again, the three main objectives of the project, the first you see there, public access to the water's edge. The people of York City should have access to the water, both for recreation, for relaxation. We want to reclaim our body of water. Next, we'll provide urban recreation, a continuous path both on the east bank and the west bank. And next, green infrastructure. This is dealing with that stormwater management and flood capacity. And I would invite anyone to log on to codoriscreekpa.com to find out more about the project and to take a survey. Could I answer any questions from council?
What was the link again, Danielle?
It is up on the screen, www.cudoriscreekpa.com.
Thank you. Sure.
Well, thank you. Appreciate your being here. Are there any questions from the members of council? Hearing none. I have no questions. Thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Now we'll move on. I propose to have a consent agenda, but prior to that, I want to mention that item number nine, which deals with special events, is being pulled from the agenda. So is there any interest in a consent agenda for resolutions 1 through 6 and 10 through 16? Or does anyone wish to have one of those items pulled? Does anyone wish to have one of those resolutions removed for further discussion?
No.
I'm not hearing any? All those in favor? We should have a, that we should have a consent agenda for items 1 through 6 and 10 through Please say aye.
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 Very well. Anyone opposed? All right. The idea of a consent agenda has been approved. Now we need to actually vote on these resolutions, and we need to call the roll, please.
Mr. President, I believe that Councilman Rivera wanted to read the resolution aloud for the Human Relations Commission, the countywide. Is that something you'd like to pull?
We just voted. Were you there, Mr. Rivera?
I was. My apologies. We wanted to pull 15 so that we could, so that I was able to read it.
Counsel, do you want to, first of all, can we, Jason? Can we go back on the vote?
I mean, it's council's meeting, so if council wants to allow reopening of it, it's, they're council rules, so council can vote to do that. And actually, if it's been voted on, it's been voted on and passed, but council could call a revote. It's your meeting, so they are your rules.
All right.
I'd like to know why you want to read it. Councilman Rivera?
I think it's that important that we, that we read the resolution because it just resonates in our community, the ability to engage the York County in a human relations commission.
Counsel, any reason to not allow Mr. Rivera to read that number, that item?
I don't have a problem with this.
Hearing none. Go ahead, Mr. Rivera.
Okay, thank you. And we also have a city resident on the phone. She wanted to make some comments regarding the Cudores Creek Project.
Well, now, you know, I mentioned early on, telephone call, that we could do things prior to our voting.
Okay, so let me read this, and then we'll handle the phone call. So, "A resolution supporting open dialogue with the County of York in discussing the impact a countywide human relations commission would have on local government and its residents, as well its authority, responsibilities, and composition. Whereas the mission of human relations is to promote ways in which people and communities learn to get along and to safeguard equal opportunity for all, and helps communities become more harmonious, respectful, and cohesive. And whereas human relations uses the tools of fact-finding, staff training, information-sharing, community education mediation, cultural literacy, hate crime response, and conflict management. And whereas, in an effort to help communities resolve disputes and conflict based on racial discrimination and denial of equal rights, the establishment of a countywide human relations commission may play a vital role in promoting community understanding and open communication, as well as help to resolve conflict, settle complaints of discrimination, and promote cooperation within the community. And whereas, the County of York is made up of a people from varied backgrounds, races, cultures, faiths, experiences, and traditions with different interests, fears, and lifestyles. And whereas, the County of York has a history that houses examples of difficult challenges regarding differences of race, gender, sexual orientation, disabilities, language, and other important aspects of our diversity. And whereas, for people of different backgrounds and interests to get along, it is useful for local government to set up places and programs that have the responsibility to help people develop a better understanding of each other and to solve differences that might arise. And whereas, human relations commissions are the most common organizations created to help manage relationships between people. And whereas, illustrating the importance of a countywide human relations commission through studies of discrimination complaints, the impact of demographic changes, and incidences of hate crime, public controversies, and disturbances is a crucial first step. And whereas, the active support of governmental officials is essential for the establishment of a countywide human relations commission. And local elected officials will expect a clear explanation of the responsibilities and powers of a countywide commission and how it will help address specific human relations needs. And whereas, the county ordinance promulgating such a commission should include at least the same types of protected classes as the city of York's human relations ordinance. And whereas, a countywide human relations commission's responsibilities and authority should address the following: it should prohibit discrimination in specific areas, i.e. employment and housing, and identify the groups that will be protected. It should establish a policy of equal opportunity in the civic, economic, political, and social aspects of the community. It should charge the commission to study and recommend to the local government programs and policies that enhance communication and understanding among all residents of the community. It should charge the commission to develop and maintain programs that build positive relations amongst communities and enhance problem-solving skills among residents throughout the community. It should promote policies and practices by all units of local government that support inclusiveness and civility among residents. It should outline the specific authorities of the commission, including areas of enforcement, subpoena power, hiring, and acceptance of public and private grants and contributions. It should define how each commissioner will be appointed, detail their authority and length of service, and outline the commission's jurisdiction and relationship with other governmental units and advisory bodies. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of York, Pennsylvania, and council hereby supports and encourages open dialogue with the County of York and will participate in robust public dialogue on establishing a countywide human relations commission and the impact a countywide human relations commission would have on local government and its residents, as well as its authority, responsibilities, and composition."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go on to any phone calls, since we've already voted on all of these things, I will open up the public comment after our legislative session is completed.
Mr. President, I just, I'm sorry, but for the record, you, I believe it was consent agenda for agenda items 1 through 8 and 10 through 17. I believe you said 10 through 16.
For the record, I said 1 through 6 and 10 through 16.
Okay. There are 17 items on the agenda.
It should have been 1 through, right, because the bills, items number 7 and 8, need to be introduced separately.
Correct. But there's 17 items. The last agenda item is the reappointment of members to the Human Relations Commission.
You are so correct.
Okay, so I have a...
Do we need to vote? Go ahead.
No. No, I mean, it's, we all get it. Okay, so I will do the introduction of the bills, and...
Well, shouldn't we clear up, Diana, shouldn't we clear up item number 17 first?
Okay, sure. I was just gonna lay it aside, but whatever you want to do.
No, I think let's vote on it. It's the appropriate thing to do. Resolution approving reappointments. It's been introduced and seconded. All in favor of these reappointments, say aye. We should have a roll call.
Yeah.
I apologize. We should have a roll call.
Okay, that...
Diana has to read the resolution, then I have to move to approve, then it has to
Everybody ready? All right, that's resolution number 76, and it is consenting to the reappointment made by the mayor of Gene Buckingham, Mark Rhodes, and Dr. Kenneth Worthwine to the Human Relations Commission, which terms shall expire July 16, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments, council? All right, well, anything from telephone on this item? All right, very good. Please call the roll.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. And that's so ordered. Now we'll go to the bills, please.
And that is agenda item number 7, which was introduction of bill number 8. And that is a bill amending the 2020 budget by appropriating additional revenue and expenditures for the Bureau of Health Lead Hazard Control Program in the amount of $104,470. Bill number 12, which is introduced by Queen of Washington, making appropriation of money not otherwise appropriated in the amount of $28,800 as carryover from 2018 to fund the expense for firefighter training. And as you said, agenda item number 9 has been pulled, and that is it for the introduction of bills.
Very good. And since these... And since these are bills, they will be considered at the next meeting of city council. Now there's a telephone call with a comment?
Yes, so are you still on the call?
Yes, I am.
Can you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, Vicky Washington, New York City. So have we brought up the resolution number ten?
Yes, Vicky.
Okay, so I'm going to comment on the resolution number 10 on the agenda. Okay, I call in not because I'm opposed to the project or even opposed to the resolution you are voting on. I call in in an effort to take advantage of an opportunity to further dialogue about the project and what could be incorporated into the project to address the glaring issues and need for neighborhood revitalization. I think it important to close the River of Opportunity Plan. Less than 1% of the total land area along the Kedoras is home to 35% of the county's minority population and 25% of the county's poverty. I believe we can't discuss this plan without bringing to the forefront the need for planning that includes economic, housing, and social benefits to the people who live in surrounding neighborhoods. Someone asked me where we begin. I believe it begins with the planning process, which predicts the longstanding generations of families who live here have been left homeless. I think currently with both the city and county, there isn't effort being made to engage the community, as we are updating the city and county's strategic plan. And I'd like to suggest that no piece of legislation is without pause, and I believe a good step would be to incorporate on 136, the Small Wood Ordinance, in all plans and incorporating it into both the city and county strategic plan. Legislation can always be creeped down the road. Once gone, I'm not pleased with resolutions, but wanted to bring awareness to our neighborhoods and to store, take them from the front, and master thought like so many projects, but something considered in the beginning of every planning process. I think council works fine.
Thank you. Thank you. Was there, are there any other phone calls?
No, sir.
All right. Any comments from council?
Counsel President, this is Philip and Solicitor and Diana. Did you vote on the consent agenda or just the, Diana's got me, okay?
Thank you.
I apologize, thank you.
Yes, I was waiting to see where he was going with this. But council has not approved the consent agenda. There was just a motion to accept the items on the consent, but you still have to approve those items.
I stumble on that every time, don't I? All right, we are now voting on the consent agenda. Please call the roll.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon? Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. And that is so ordered. Now are there comments from council? Hearing none? Is there anything from the administration?
No.
No? Very good. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.